President Speaker. Today is June 5, 2020. The day 26 of our fourth regular session. Twenty-first Congress will now come to order. May we all power it for a moment of silent prayer. Chief Burks, roll call.
Senator Aritz. Senator Christian. Senator Figuerre.
Here.
Senator Collin.
Yes, Madam.
Leader Harper. Senator Conman.
Hey, man.
President Moses. Senator Ned. Senator Palick.
Yes.
Senator Perman. Senator Romolo.
Yes.
Senator Orsman. Senator Wally.
Yes.
Speaker Semina.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, twelve members are present.
Okay, we do have a quorum to trans- this morning. Before we continue, Chairman Orsman, you're designated to serve as our acting floor leader. Okay, Adam. Short resist subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. We're on the reading of the journal, acting floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the reading of the journal be dispensed with.
Second. Has been moved and seconded. I would dispense with the reading of the journal. Those in favor of that motion say yes.
Aye.
Motion carried. You now dispense with the reading of the journal. Okay, next item, Chief Burks. Short resist. Congress is back in session. We're on item five, Chief Burks.
Mr. Speaker, item five, presidential communications. We have one, and it's number 21-296.
Okay, find that, Chief Burks, next item.
Item six, FSM Supreme Court communications, none. Item seven, member communications, also none. Item eight, departmental communications, none. Item nine, agency or governmental authority communications, none. Item ten, state communications, none. Item eleven, state Supreme Court communications, none. Item twelve, municipal or town communications, also none. And item thirteen, foreign government communications, none, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, we're now on our order of the day. Item fourteen, standing committee reports, Chief Burks.
There are none, Mr. Speaker.
Item fifteen, special committee reports, Chief Burks.
None, Mr. Speaker.
Item?
Item sixteen, Speaker, assignment measures and communications. We do not have any.
Okay, next item.
Item seventeen, unfinished business, none.
Okay, item eighteen, that's the bill calendar. First bill, Chief Burks.
Mr. Speaker, we have CP number 21-229 for second reading. CP number 21-229, it's a bill for an act to amend public law number 21- excuse me, to amend public law 11-52 by amending the title and sections one and two thereof to change the purpose, use a loty and lap state of the funds previously appropriated therein for the purpose of funding the purchase of a vessel for Chuk State and for other purposes.
Okay, Chairman Figuerre. Move for the passage of the bill. Okay, on the second. Has been moved and seconded. That Congress pass on second and final reading, CP number 21-229. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, there is no objection. Discussion is closed. Short resist subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session.
Speaker, point of privilege.
Twenty-nine, ask your point, Chairman Perman.
Yeah, thank you very much, Speaker. Good morning to you and all honorable members and all of those who are observing. Speaker, I rise in a point of privilege to recognize Mr. Redley Killian, president of the Ford FSM Constitution Convention. Can we please give him a round of applause? He's here with us today in Ponpe, stranded.
Thank you very much, Chairman Perman, for introducing the person of our Constitutional Convention. It's good he's stranded there so they can continue doing some works for the kan kan. Okay, any other point of privilege? If none, if there's no objection, we will now go back to discussion on the bill 229. Chairman Romolo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Move for adoption of the floor amendment on this appeal.
Has been moved and seconded that the offer for amendment to CP number 21-229, offered by Chairman Romolo, be adopted. Because of its length, we will dispense with its reading. Acting floor, any rules suspended?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I move that the relevant rules that may impede our action on this, especially the prohibition of substantive amendment on second reading be suspended.
Mr. Speaker. Show of hand. It's been moved and seconded that the relevant rules, specifically the rules prohibiting substantive amendments on second and final reading be suspended. Those in favor say ayes. Oppose, no. Motion carried. Those relevant rules are now suspended. So let's vote, those in favor of adoption or discussion on the offered amendment. Any discussion? If none, there's no objection. Discussion is closed. So let's vote, those in favor of adoption of the offer for amendment to CP 21-229 offered by Chairman Romolo. Say ayes. Oppose, no. Motion carried. The offered amendments are adopted. We now have CD one. Any further discussion on CD one? If none, there's no objection. Discussion is closed. So let's vote by local of delegations. Chief Burks.
Who's voting for Chuk?
Romolo will cast a vote for Chuk.
I'm flick of interest.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Step up, Chuk, Chairman Romolo.
Yes.
Yes.
Step up Ponpe, Chairman Perman. Step up Koshai, Chairman Wally.
No. No.
Step up Yap, Chairman Orsman.
Yes, for the people of Setawak.
Mr. Speaker, two states, four to four, two against.
For that reason, CP number 21-229. Short resist, please, Speaker. Okay, Congress is back in session. Based on the voting on second and final reading, CP number 21-229, CD one does not pass Congress on second and final reading. So next bill.
Mr. Speaker.
Next bill, yes, who said?
Mr. Speaker, this is Senator Collin. As I hope those two will assist their voting.
We can see you, I cannot, yeah.
Speaker, I move to reconsider CP action on CP 21-229.
President. It has been moved and seconded that Congress reconsider its action on CP number 21-229, CD one. That is not subject to debate. The same number of votes are required for adoption of that motion to reconsider. So Chief Burks, roll call of delegations.
Mr. Speaker, reconsideration of 229, CD one. State of Chuk, Chairman Romolo.
Yes.
Step up Ponpe, Chairman Perman.
Apologize to the introducer. My vote stands still, no.
Step up Koshai, Chairman Wally.
No.
State of Yap, Chairman Orsman.
Speaker, thank you. As a person, I had to be consistent, so my vote is aye. A vote for Yap is aye.
Mr. Speaker, two states, four to four, two against consideration.
Okay, for a reason, motion to reconsider is not adopted. So it's aye, so next bill. Next bill, Chief Burks.
Yeah, Mr. Speaker, we have CP number 21-219, CD three for second reading. CP number 219, CD three. It's a bill for an act to further amend public law number 20-178 as amended by public laws numbers 21-1, 21-7, 21-36, 21-53, 21-56, 21-102, and 21-115 by amending sections three, four, and six thereof to change the use, a loty and lap state of funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people of Koshai, Ponpe. to fund public projects and social programs for the people of Koshai, Pompe, and Chuk states and for other purposes.
And Chairman Fagir.
Move for the passage of the bill on second and final reading.
Any second?
Again.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pants on second and final reading, CP number twenty-one dash two-one-nine, CD three. Discussion.
Speaker, Speaker.
Yes, Chairman.
Thank you, I, I move to defer the bill to the next session day.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that CP number twenty-one dash two-one-nine, CD three be deferred to the next session day. Those in favor of that motion say yes, opposed no. Motion carried, CP number twenty-one dash two-one-nine, CD three is deferred to the next session day. Next bill.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CP number twenty-one dash two-hundred-twenty-five, CD eight for second reading from the Committee on Ways and Means. This is the supplemental budget. Uh, CP number two-hundred, twenty-one dash two-hundred-twenty-five, CD eight. It's a bill for an act to amend sections one, two, three, six, eight, nine, and twelve of Public Law number twenty-one dash forty-two, as amended by Public Laws numbers twenty-one dash fifty-five, twenty-one dash seventy-seven, twenty-one dash ninety-four, and twenty-one dash one-one-six to appropriate eight-hundred-forty-thousand dollars of un-unalotted funds from the General Fund of the Federated States of Micronesia for the fiscal year ending September thirty, twenty-twenty, in order to provide supplemental funding for the operations of the National Government of the Federated States of Micronesia to provide supplemental funding for staff housing and for other purposes.
Okay, Chairman Fagir.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I move for the passage of the bill on second and final reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pants on second and final reading, CP number twenty-one dash two-twenty-five, CD eight. Okay, discussion. Any discussion? Short resist, subject to call of the chair.
For amendment by Senator Christian, say yes. A vote no. Motion carried. The offered for amendment by Senator Christian is adopted. We now have C D nine. Okay, any further discussion, Vice Speaker Moses?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I will offer an amendment on your behalf to the said bill. It's quite lengthy, so I would request that we dispense with this reading. And I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the offer for amendment to C P twenty-one dash two twenty-five, C D nine offered by Vice Speaker Moses on behalf of Speaker Semina. And because of its length, we will dispense with its reading. The relevant rules are still suspended up to this point. Discussion. Any discussion on the offered amendments? If none, there is no objection. Discussion is closed, so let's vote. Those in favor of adoption of the offer for amendment to C P twenty-one dash two twenty-five, C D nine by Vice Speaker Moses on behalf of Speaker Semina, say yes. A vote no. Motion carried. The offered amendments are adopted. When I have C D ten. Okay. Next. Discussion. Continue discussion on the offered amendments.
Question? Question?
Congress is back in session. Chairman Romolo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. There is a floor amendment under said bill and we vote as adoption.
Okay, any second?
Second.
Remember that the offer or amendment to C P twenty-one dash two offered by Chairman Romolo, we adopted. Because of its length, we will dispense with its reading. And the relevant rules are still suspended up to this point. Discussion. Any discussion?
Questions call for? Questions?
Questions can call for? There is no objection. Discussion is closed. So let's vote. Those in favor of adoption of the offer for amendment to C P twenty-one dash two twenty-five, offered by Chairman Romolo, say yes. A vote no.
Yes.
No.
Can we vote by
Can we vote?
Show of hands, please, because these folks are very noisy.
Yes, yes, well.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's vote raise by hand. So those guys from Conde should be satisfied with their vote. Thank you.
So we'll come back and we vote by hand. Congress is back in session. The voting is not quite clear. There seems to be equal number of ayes and nays, so we will vote by hand. Please, those who are in favor of the motion to adopt those amendments, say raise your right hand. Those opposed, raise your right hand. So what's the count, Chief Clerk? Short recess, subject to call of the chair. We'll make that ruling. Congress is back in session. The fold is tie fold six-six, so that reason, the offered amendments to twenty-one, twenty-five, C D ten by Chairman Romolo are adopted. We now have C D eleven.
Mr. Speaker, I beg a point of order.
Point of order, say your point, Senator Christian.
Our rules call for a majority for approval, a simple majority. And when this particular vote was cast, it was a tie vote. And therefore, that particular question did not muster the one, the tie plus one. So the, the motion should have been defeated.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Okay, Elsie, how about here? What's the ruling? Are we clear? Congress is back in session. Based on the opinion of our legal people, my ruling that offered amendments were adopted, now I now reverse. Okay, first one to our, okay, so C D ten. Okay, any further discussion on the C P twenty-one dash two twenty-five?
Question?
C D eleven.
C D eleven, I'm sorry, yeah. Any further discussion on C D eleven?
Questions call for?
Okay, if none, there is no objection. Discussion is closed. So let's vote, Chief Clerk, by oral call of allocations.
State of chair, Chairman Romolo. State of Pompeii, Chairman Perman. State of Koshai, Chairman Wally. State of Yap, Chairman Orsma.
Yap's vote, it's very consistent, it's a no. No. If clerk, you hear that, no.
Mr. Speaker, three states voted in affirmative.
For that reason, C P number
Call of, call of order.
C D eleven has passed Congress on second and final reading.
Call of order, Speaker.
Chairman Romolo, yes, you say your point.
Yes, I believe, I want Chief Clerk, Chief Clerk to verify the vote. I believe the Chuk vote is no. And if I hear correctly, the Yap vote is also no.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Uh, ruling on no votes. So for that reason, C P twenty-one dash two twenty-five, C D eleven, has not passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Mr. Speaker, the next bill is C P number twenty-one dash two thirty for second reading. C P number twenty-one dash two hundred thirty. It's a bill for an act to further amend public law number fifteen dash thirty-two as amended by public laws numbers fifteen dash thirty-six, fifteen dash forty-four, seventeen dash seven, fifteen dash sixty-three, fifteen dash seventy-two, fifteen dash seventy-eight, sixteen dash three, sixteen dash eleven, sixteen dash thirty-three, sixteen dash forty-six, seventeen dash twelve, seventeen dash twenty-one, seventeen dash thirty-three, seventeen dash forty, eighteen dash seventeen, eighteen dash sixty-seven, eighteen dash eighty-five, eighteen dash one oh four, nineteen dash seventeen, nineteen dash one hundred, nineteen dash one fifty-seven, twenty dash thirty-four and twenty dash thirty-eight. By amending sections one and two thereof for the purpose of changing the use, allot and lap state of certain funds previously appropriate therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people of Chuk state and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuerre.
Move for the passage of the bill on second and final reading.
Sure. That's been moved and seconded at Congress pass on second and final reading, C P number twenty-one dash two thirty. Discussion, yeah?
Mr. Speaker.
Yes, what's that? Raise your, oh, okay, Chairman Coleman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I have an amendment I wish to offer to the written amendment. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair.
Questions?
Discussion is closed. So it's voted by oral call of allocation.
State of Chuk, Chairman Romolo. Can you restate? You're muted, we cannot hear.
Yes. Why, yes?
Thank you. State of Pompeii, Chairman Perman. State of Koshai, Chairman Wally.
Yes. Yes.
State of Yap, Chairman Orsma.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, all the four states voted for.
For that reason, C P twenty-one dash twenty-one has passed Congress on second and final reading. Okay, next bill.
There are none, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker.
Vice Speaker Moses, you have the floor.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I would like to draw on place on today's calendar, C P number twenty-one dash two thirty-one.
Okay.
So move.
Second, second. Moved and seconded that C P number twenty-one dash two thirty-one be withdrawn from committee and placed on the bill calendar for first reading action. Those in favor of the motion, say yes. A vote no.
Yes.
Number one, twenty-one, is withdrawn from committee and now placed on the bill calendar for action. Read the title.
Chairman. Yes, Mr. Speaker, we have C P number twenty-one dash twenty-two thirty-one. This is a bill for an act to further amend public law number twenty dash one twenty-five as amended by public laws, first twenty dash one thirty-five, twenty dash one forty-six, twenty dash one fifty-seven, twenty dash one seventy-nine, twenty dash one eighty-nine, twenty-one dash six, twenty-one dash forty, twenty-one dash fifty-nine and twenty-one dash ninety-six. By amending section four thereof to change the use of certain funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people of the state of Pompeii and for other purposes.
Hey, Chairman Figuerre. Chairman Figuerre.
Move for the passage of the bill on first reading.
Okay, any second? Second. It's been moved and seconded at Congress pass on first reading, C P number twenty-one dash two thirty-one. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, if there is no objection, discussion is closed. So let's vote by oral call of members, first reading. Chief Clerk.
Senator Aritas. Senator Christian. Senator Figuerre.
Yes. Yes.
Senator Cohen.
Yes.
Senator Harper. Senator Coleman. Senator Coleman.
Yes, I vote for him. Step down.
Vice Speaker Moses. Senator Senator Palik.
Yes.
Senator Perman. Senator Romolo.
Yes.
Senator Orsma.
Amin.
Senator Wally. Senator Wally.
Yes.
Speaker Semina.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, eleven members voted for.
For that reason, C P number twenty-one dash twenty-one has passed Congress on second and, I mean, first reading, sorry. Okay, next bill.
Speaker. I may not be out of order. Motion to move down to resolution calendar.
We are now going down to resolution calendar. If there is no objection, we're now on resolution calendar. Yes, any resolution required?
Yeah. Speaker.
Currently none, Mr. Speaker.
Speaker.
Okay, Chairman Perman, yeah, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move to place C R number twenty-one dash one sixty-four under our resolution calendar for today. So move.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Resolution number twenty-one dash one sixty-four be placed on the resolution calendar for action. Those in favor of that motion, say yes. Oppose, motion cap, number, I mean, twenty-one, that one is placed on the resolution calendar for action. Chief Clerk.
Mr. Speaker, question of resolution number twenty-one dash one four, one sixty-four. It's a resolution extending the fourth regular session of the Twenty-First Congress of the Federated States of Micronesia to June sixth, twenty twenty.
Okay, there we have it.
So move, Mr. Speaker.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that resolution number twenty-one dash one sixty-four be adopted. Discussion.
Sure resist.
Sure resist, subject Congress is back in session. I believe we're discussing CP, I mean CP 21-164. Any further discussion? Question? On four, there is no objection. Discussion is closed, so let's vote. Those in favor of adoption of Resolution 21-164, say yes. Opposed, no.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution number 21-164 is adopted by Congress. Next resolution, Chipper.
Speaker.
Who's that? Oh, okay, Perman, Chairman Perman.
Thank you, Speaker. I think today is fine today, so I move a motion for us to stand in recess till 10:00 a.m. tomorrow, tomorrow at speakers' time or Chuk time.
Any second? Any second?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Congress stand in recess until tomorrow at 10:00 in the morning, Chuk time. Those in favor of that motion say yes.
We all but none.
Yes.
Motion carried. Congress now stands in recess until tomorrow at 10:00 in the morning, Chuk time.